And we're back like we never left. He's Isaac.
He's Philip.
We've got Mr. Steve Fisher today.
That's right. Steve, we've got some info on you. You, according to Raccoon Valley Radio circa 2017, you are a graduate from Ogden High School, grew up in Beaver, Iowa, went on to serve two years in the military. Thank you for your service. Since then, you've served on several church boards while working your farm over there south of Grand Junction. Says you're also, you've been involved with the Pork Producer Board, currently the Board President of Farmer Mutual Insurance.
Now Raccoon Valley Insurance. We just changed our name.
Okay. And this article that we pulled information out of was, was written back when you joined the Green County School District Board.
Yes.
And so you're still on that board, still serving as a public servant.
Right.
Doing what's good for the local people and representing those.
Trying. Yeah. Yeah. Doing our best. So.
And so I see a theme, and I suppose I should say one other thing. You have been married, your wife Patty, for is it 24 years now?
Twenty-five, actually 26 next week, in two weeks.
Congratulations on that. Got two kids, Nadia and Kale, who are both living in Arizona now, but
Yes.
sounded like they were doing well from talking before the show.
Yeah. And I have three older kids from a previous marriage who are all doing well. And yeah, so yeah, I've got five kids total. So yeah, and seven grandkids. So.
Big family.
Yeah. Yeah. Busy.
Yeah.
Yeah. Not able to see some of them right now because of COVID stuff, but yeah.
You know, busy, that, that kind of seems like a theme with you, at least as long as I've known you now. It seems like you're always active or busy, if you wanted to, you know, use that word with something.
Right, right. And first of all, I'd like to say thank you for having me here. I'm honored to be here with three of my favorite millennials.
I love it.
You guys give me a lot of hope for the future of
What defines a millennial?
Aren't you a millennial?
I don't, I don't know.
You are. You are.
Yeah, you are. Yeah. Generation Y, isn't it? I think, I looked it up.
I'm thirty. I was born in ninety-one. This youngster over here, he might be a millennial, but I feel like I'm on the
I'm a Gen Z. So I'm like, I'm the next one down.
Are you really?
I was born twenty-six days too late to be a millennial.
I count you in the millennial group.
What counts? How do you be a millennial? You have to grow up in the
You were born in the nineties.
What I've read is
You are a millennial.
You're up to ninety-five. Ninety-six is what I've read is when it switches. And I was born January of ninety-six.
Right.
So that's why. Yeah. But I feel like I relate more to the millennial group.
Yeah, for sure.
Grew up in a rural town. I mean, we're a couple of years behind the curve anyway, so.
You guys all possess wisdom. I believe in it's, you know, everlasting and way beyond what most young people have.
Oh gosh. What a compliment coming from you.
Yeah, thank you.
No, I wish I would have possessed that kind of wisdom when I was your age. I would have done a lot of things different and probably had a much smoother life. So.
Probably largely a result of the people that we've had around us in our upbringing.
Yes. I think your, yeah, your upbringing, your, your influences, your families have all been solid. And I don't know your family real well.
I think they're pretty great.
Yeah, I'm sure that, well, they must be because look at the, look at the end result.
Thank you.
Yeah, but anyway, so it's an honor to be here.
Thank you. It's an honor to have you here.
Well, we're all honored.
To get just such a high quality guest as yourself.
Because you've, you've done some things. You've been some places. Like, there's a lot of things, you're this board and that board and this board. And it seems like one thing that I'm very fascinated with is that maybe is it fair to say that everything you do, you kind of naturally ascend to some sort of a leadership position?
I
Seems to just naturally
I don't know if I ascend or if I, or if it's attrition.
You're just around long enough.
I stick it out till I get there. Sure. No, I think God's blessed me with some, some leadership skills. And I think I've developed some through my experiences in life, you know, especially the military. It teaches you a lot about chain of command and about, you know, just basic leadership things. And you just experience a lot of good leaders when you're in a military situation, you know, so you, you kind of see what it's, how it's supposed to be. Yeah.
Do you have any like stories or like moments that like stand out in your mind where you like saw something on display that you really came away with? Understanding, like in your military experience?
Military experience? Well, a little bit of background. I went in the military in nineteen seventy-four. And that was just after Vietnam was, I mean, I'm actually a Vietnam veteran, a Vietnam era veteran, because if you served before May of seventy-five, you're actually a Vietnam era veteran. And I went in in August of seventy-four, but I did not go to Vietnam. I ended up in Eastern Turkey. But yeah, my, my experience during the military was such, when I went in, they were taking anybody with a pulse because nobody wanted to be in the military then. And I decided really, it was a spur of the moment decision to join the military. I was supposed to go to Iowa State University. I was all signed up. I had pledged to fraternity even over at Iowa State. And then in June of that summer, I just was feeling uneasy and this desire to just get out of Dodge. And the military looked like a good opportunity to do that, you know, and, and so I joined and my first experience in military was not a good experience because when I went through basic training down at Fort Leonard Wood, Missouri, eight weeks of basic training and the three main things that they teach you in basic training are, are military proficiency, physical training, you know, they get you in shape. And then marksmanship, which is firearms, you know, of all kinds, all different kinds. And I really worked hard when I got to basic training to do well in all those three proficiency areas. And at the end of basic training, I had performed well. And I had the top score in my company of two hundred men on those three areas put together.
Wow.
I did not get promoted out of basic training. And I think the reason I didn't get promoted because I wasn't getting to know the, the drill sergeants and, and the squad leaders and stuff and and I always said I wasn't brown nosing enough. And so it, it really, it, I learned a lot from that bad experience.
Yeah.
It's really not always how hard you try, but the relationships that you build. And so when I went on to Fort Sill, Oklahoma for artillery training, I had kind of given up. I just thought, you know, I'm just going to get through this and just do whatever I have to do to get through it. So when we got to artillery training one day, when we first got there, they said, who wants to be a truck driver? I'll be a truck driver. That sounds like a sham job, you know? So I went through truck driving school, which was just a few days, but I ended up after graduating from truck driving school, I, they asked, does anybody want to be a company commander driver? I said, yeah, I'll do that. That sounds easy. And so I got to be the Jeep driver for the company commander.
That's cool.
So I got to know the company commander.
That sounds helpful.
And I did well, you know, and I got along with him. I developed a really good relationship with him and I, I, you know, did what I was supposed to do very, you know, obediently and proficiently. I got promoted twice
Wow.
in AIT. And that was a good lesson for me, you know, it's not all about, you know, your performance. It's about your relationships too.
For sure.
And, you know, I, I think I learned a lot there. And then I was sent overseas after that. And I had real strong relationships over there because I was on a very remote combat unit in Eastern Turkey with only fifty other American soldiers. And we, we were a tight group.
I bet.
And yeah, so yeah, it was, it was a good, you know, I was just a little farm boy from Beaver, Iowa. Really hadn't been out and had to be forced into developing relationships. And that was, that was a good thing. That's probably the biggest takeaway I had from my military experience. So.
It's a big takeaway.
Indeed.
Yeah.
And I can see that because, you know, just coming off of the farm, I imagine you knew how to work hard.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sure you did.
Yeah. Yeah. I was always a good worker, you know, my, my, I came from good workers, you know, my grandfather and my dad and all my, I had three younger brothers and we all, that's all we did was work. But, but I had to learn how to develop relationships once I got out into the world and out into life. So.
Was it? Go ahead.
Well, just because that wasn't something that naturally was happening?
Right. Yeah, I just had never been forced into that, you know, in any experiences. And I was very shy when I was a young kid. I was like almost debilitatingly shy. I was really quiet when I was growing up.
I would never have guessed that knowing you today.
I was scared to death of girls when I was in high school.
Oh, we're scary. So.
Oh, I know. Well, I wasn't ever around girls. So, you know, they just made me nervous. I had a girlfriend, my junior and senior year.
There you go.
Generally, girls made me nervous. So.
I can relate to that. Very similar to.
He had, he had two sisters.
Yeah, and they, and they didn't make things any easier.
Older sisters.
Where do you think the fear came from?
We've dealt with a lot of that. Yeah, there is some stuff there. Anyway.
Probably the most, the thing that I developed the most when I was in the military was my social and relational skills. So.
Was it difficult to learn how to like be relational in that way? Did it take long for you?
I don't know. I, you're talking.
Yeah, a long time ago.
You know, it seemed to come fine, you know, it just, I just didn't have the experience of it, you know, so.
So it was just a matter of getting started, just getting out there and meeting people.
Right.
Putting yourself out there a little bit.
Just a matter of necessity more than anything, you know, but, but yeah, experiential too. So.
You joined the military, you said, just to like get out of Dodge, just to like get out and about a little bit. But where, did you know what you wanted to do? Post-military, like all roads led back to?
The farm.
The farm.
I always knew I was going to end up back on the farm. Yeah, there was never any doubt of that in my mind. I knew that I wanted to get away and get some education. I didn't know I wanted to do the military, but my dad had been in the military. He was in at the end of the Korean War. And my little brother ended up joining the military after I did. So we, we've got a little military history in our family. And I honestly think it was one of the best things I ever did in my life was to serve in the military. I, I wouldn't trade it for anything. So got me out of Dodge.
You were looking for a little experience before you just stayed in one place the rest of your, yeah, that's interesting.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't know really what I was getting into when I joined the military. And as it turned out, I had no idea what I was going to get into. So.
It was two, two years? That was?
Two years.
Two years.
Yeah, I just, well, and then I did a year in the Guard when I got out. Yeah. So I was
Which is short. Was that standard for back then, like a two-year?
You could do, you could do a two-year or a three-year enlistment. And the thing was, if you did a three-year enlistment, you could pick your MOS, your job and your duty station.
Right on.
But if you went in two years, you could pick your MOS, but it was a very generalized, usually combat MOSs. Couldn't get into anything really specialized. So I just joined the artillery.
Sure.
I, they told me I would be good as a forward operator or a, what was it called? Cause I had done very good in my testing, my math scores especially were high. And fire direction control is what they told me I would probably get into once I got into. That's the guy that sits back in the van and takes the, the directions of where the, the target is. And then you set the quadrant deflection on the guns and the charge and let them shoot. It's a lot of mathematical stuff. And, but I never did get into that. I ended up getting into something way more technical than that. So.
Can you tell us about that?
Yeah, I can.
Because I know, but I know that you don't know. And I'm really excited for him to.
Yeah, I I, I ended up getting sent, like I said, to Turkey. Well, they also told me I probably wouldn't go overseas in a two-year enlistment. So when I got my orders to go over to Germany, I was like, no, I don't really want to go there. And but that turned out to be a great experience too. And then when I got to Germany, they, they him-hawed around for a few days and said, well, you're, well, they said, you have good teeth. You're going to Turkey. I said, what? He says, they don't have any dentists there. I said, I didn't know we had troops in Turkey. He said, yeah, we do. You're going.
All right.
And so I got sent to Turkey. We had seven detachments. They were nuclear detachments along the northern border of Turkey between all of the stands, you know, those Kazakhstan and whatever Zivzivdikstan and, and Russia. We were, I was in the farthest east detachment, they were called. It was Tusslog Det nine-eight. We were NATO. We were attached to NATO. And we were our, our little detachments of about fifty American troops were, each one of them was attached to a Turkish artillery battalion, an eight-inch battalion, eight-inch gun. They're, they're the biggest howitzer that is fired in the army. And we were a nuclear detachment. We built and, and armed and fired nuclear weapons over there. So that was really neat experience. And I couldn't, I think I told you, I couldn't tell anybody about it for twenty years after I came home. I was, I had a top secret background investigation, clearance. Which, you know, they actually, after I, after they had applied me for that clearance, they sent FBI people back and did a check on my, you know, my record and
Yeah.
and my principal told me years later that, yeah, and FBI came to the school and talked to us about, you know, who you were and
Crazy.
Wow.
He must have lied a little bit. But so, yeah, so that was, and that was cool. I mean, we had, I had a clearance. I could get in the war room of the Pentagon.
Wow.
So, but, so yeah, that was really technical, high responsibility duty. And the neat thing was, is we, we had these, what were called tech op teams. We had five of them over there. And it was, it was an officer and then about four or five enlisted men on each tech op team. So we had a very high officer to enlisted ratio over there. So we basically got treated like officers. I mean, we, you know, did all, all the things that the officers did whenever we traveled or, or like even on our base, you know, we, we fraternized with the officers way more than you do in the general military. So it was cool. It was, it was a really awesome experience. We had, there was a lot to learn. And yeah, it was a good experience.
So like that, your last year in, in the military was all about doing that?
The last year and a half.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Once, well, actually a year and eight months.
So basic training was short.
Four months was basic training and artillery, general artillery training. And then once I got sent overseas, I was doing the, it's called, I was a thirteen Bravo forty Mike five, which was the designation of the job that I did. So Mike five was the, was the nuclear designation. So, yeah.
Wild.
It was pretty cool.
So that whole basic training phase was relatively short. And then they got you right into a specialized job
Right.
pretty quick.
Yeah. Right.
Right on. So that Beaver Iowa math education, really, they were doing something right there.
I, I think it was all God. I don't know. Yeah. I, I don't know why I got sent. I, it, yeah, it's just crazy the way things work.
Yeah.
Yeah. But it was so, it was enriching to my life to be able to have those experiences, even though I'd, I mean, I didn't talk to a girl my whole nineteenth year of life, basically, well, eighteen and a half to almost twenty.
Wow.
Because there wasn't any women over there. And the women that were in the population over there were all Muslim. They were all wearing burkas, you know, and you couldn't talk to them. So I remember when I got home, I went to a basketball game one night. This would have been like in March of seventy-six. And I, I mean, some girls came up and were talking to me. I started shaking so bad, I had to leave and go home.
Wow.
It scared me. I said I was scared of girls, but.
You meant it.
But.
Built nuclear weapons. Comes home.
The real challenge.
Shakes like a leaf when talks to girls.
Women, you don't even know the power you have sometimes.
I, yeah, yeah. Remember that, Lindsay.
My goodness.
Man, so, so going back to the farm after all of that, was that like a welcome change of pace for you? Or how was it adapting coming out of that?
Well, I went to school after that. I, I actually worked for a year after that. And then I didn't start school till I was almost twenty-one years old. And I did not, I did a two-year program in farm operations at Iowa State. And actually, back then, they had the quarter system where you, you know, they had four quarters a year. It wasn't semesters. And you guys probably don't even realize that, but so I'd go to school for a quarter and then I'd work for a quarter. That's where I learned how to build houses because I worked for a really good contractor over there. And I, I worked on a concrete construction crew, you know, and, and I worked at the large animal veterinarian clinic over there and, and did that the whole time I was in school. So I'd, I'd get up at five o'clock in the morning and scoop horse manure for about three hours before I'd go to class. So and goats. So, yeah, I had a lot of different
That's wild.
experiences.
Sure.
Yeah. But yeah, so I did that for probably three, four years off and on before I finally settled back on the farm. Yeah. But, so there was a transition of other things before I came home to the farm. To answer your question, I guess eventually, but.
Sure.
Did that feel strange, like being in a position of like promotion in the military and then come home and then it's kind of like civilian again, like scooping poop? That didn't, that didn't bother you or it's just, there's?
Job's a job and you're gonna do it.
Yeah. And I knew all those things were temporary. I knew eventually what I was going to come back and do. So it was, I was, I was happy when I came back and I was where I knew I was supposed to be. So but it, but it was good to get all those experiences to draw upon and understand that, you know, this is where I really want to end up and be. So.
Do you think like all those jobs you had, you know, interim, was that something you did on purpose? Or was that just by happenstance that you did all of those different things?
Good question. I, well, you know, I had, like I said, I had the urge to get out of Dodge. Okay. And I knew I needed to go do something. I didn't want to just graduate from high school and go right into farming. I mean, I, I know guys that do that. And I know guys that have been very, you know, done very well doing that. But I, I don't know. I just had this, I think it was a God breathed desire to, to go out and develop, you know, some of my skills that probably I wouldn't have developed on the farm, like social skills and relational skills, you know, I mean, and so, you know, I, I mean, looking back, you guys will get more of this perspective as you age. You can see where God had a, had a place in your life where he directed things that you didn't even know he was directing. You guys will probably know because you're more sensitive to that than I was at that time. But I, you know, I, I can look back and see where, you know, he led me to things that I probably would have never done on my own, you know, so. And, and then there were some other things that I did on my own that led to a lot of strife and destruction. So we won't go into those.
Understood.
But it's all good.
It's all good.
Yeah.
Now, one thing you said that I feel like I just have to ask before we move on is, you said, built test and fired nuclear weapons.
Right.
Where did you fire a nuclear weapon to?
We didn't actually fire real ones. We fired dummies. Yeah. We
Simulations or?
Our job over there was number one, to keep custody of the, of the weapons. We had at the time, I can say this now, about two hundred nuclear projectiles that were fired out of an eight-inch howitzer. Okay. So they're eight-inch diameter. They were about, I suppose, I used to know, thirty-two inches tall. They weighed a couple hundred pounds. They were very dense. And they came in four separate packages. So, you know, because they had to be stored inertly, you know, that you didn't want to store a live round because if something happened, it would be a live round. But we, our job was to number one, keep custody of them, which meant there had to be an American, there had to be American eyes on the weapons at all the time, at all times. So we worked jointly with the Turks every day, the Turkish troops every day. And because of that, that was a neat deal too, because we build relationships with them. And I learned how to speak Turkish, you know, and so that was good. At the time, I didn't think it was, but because they really smelled bad. But
Some teeth issues, some dental issues there.
Yeah. They had a lot of interesting, they were good, good soldiers though, very good soldiers. And then we would take the, the weapons that were stored in these four packages. And our job was to assemble them into whatever configuration, the orders that, that we were ordered to put them in, like they had a variable yield on these weapons from, I think it was like point three kiloton up to twenty kiloton. Twenty kiloton is, is the same as the, the same yield load as went off at Hiroshima and Nagasaki. That's a big bomb. All out of an eight-inch diameter
Wow.
weapon, you know, I mean, they were a lot more refined than, what was it, Big Bob or Big Bertha or whatever they dropped on Hiroshima.
Right. Little boy and?
Big boy.
Boxcar was the other one? Or was that the plane?
Might have been the plane.
Oh, the Zanino La Gay was the plane.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anyway, one of them might have been, I don't know. But anyway, so, yeah. And then we would, we would build the weapon into whatever configuration we were supposed to. There was different components inside that you'd arrange in different ways. And we had to be trained on how to do all that. And then we would, we had to actually carry them, carry the weapons to the gun. And then we would ram them in the gun and then the Turks would fire them. So there was a lot of technical training that we had. We also had to, were trained to destroy the weapons in case we were going to be overrun. So we had a lot of, of shape charges, they called them, and, and C4, which is a plastic explosive and det cord and blasting caps and stuff that we had to be trained with. And we did a lot of simulations on blowing the whole site up if we had to. I really enjoyed that part of it. Because we actually did get to blow some stuff up. That was a lot of fun. So.
Demo day.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you could wrap that det cord around a six-inch tree a couple of times and light it off. It'd blow the tree.
Oh, wow.
Knock the tree down. So, yeah.
A bit stronger than Tannerite.
We need a little bit of that for the farm.
Yeah. Yeah. It was, yeah. And C4 was an amazing, it's a plastic explosive, you know, and you could light it. And it would just burn like white phosphorus. So, so there was a lot of neat stuff that a farm boy from Beaver, Iowa would have never, ever experienced had I not been in the military. So. And I served with a lot of good guys. So.
Cool.
Very cool.
Yeah.
So then back to the farm.
Yeah.
Back to Iowa.
Right.
Back to East Green County. And then you're putting seed in the dirt. And then you're picking it up once it's a crop in the fall.
Right. Yeah. And raising a lot of pigs and cattle and, yeah, yeah.
So then?
Always had livestock too.
Did you?
Yeah.
Still?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. We still have several hog, big hog barns, you know. I, I'm not doing that now. My son and we have a full-time young guy, Will Shahean, that works for us. He's awesome. He's been with me for nine years now, I think. So he's, yeah, really good.
Very cool. It's up, because you farming, how long, how many years now have you been?
Actively farming?
Yeah. Besides your whole life? Because I know it was your family farm.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, yeah, I started working on the farm when I was six, seven years old, but actively farming since probably nineteen eighty, I think. So, yeah, I think I just finished my forty-first year.
Right on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Is there anything you'd rather be doing?
Nope. Well, now retiring. Slowing down, which I've been progressively doing the last, I'd say, five years. And, and I'm, I'm to the point now where I don't have to be there all the time. And I, I like that. But I still like being there when I, I feel a lot better now thanks to my chiropractor. So I feel more physically able to, to, you know, to be able to do the things that I like doing now. I honestly do. Yeah.
It's good.
I give you a lot of credit for that, by the way. Plug. Shameless plug.
So check that health box off. Go to the chiropractor.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Are there any other health things that you do? I've seen your basement. I know you've got
Well, yeah.
setup down there.
I've got a sauna that I built that I, I just used it last night. And I try to do some cardio stuff, you know, several times a week. I'm not always the best at that. I do a little bit of, I don't do weights anymore. I do these bands now. You know, and resistance bands, I guess. I like those. Just keep working.
Keep working.
I, you know, I'm trying to do a better job of, of nutrition, especially in the COVID area now, you know, I've kind of upped my game plan on some of that. And although I've always kind of been into, into that somewhat too.
Yeah.
But not extreme. But, yeah, I think I lost some weight, you know, I think that's good for you too. I
You look good.
Well, I feel so much better. I mean, yeah, Patty and I both decided the beginning of this year that we just needed to do something. And and we, we did. And it was very effective. And we both feel a lot better. And we just decided that this is the way we want to live, you know, so.
And I know you used the Noom
Yes.
system.
App.
The app system.
Right.
And you told me one time that it kind of like helped retrain how you eat and when you eat and when to know your body needs food, things like that.
It's, yeah, it's really It's, yeah, it's really a lot about the psychology of, of why we, of why we eat what we eat and then how to kind of retrain yourself to know not to, to continue to, you know, to, to keep some of those old habits and to develop some new habits and you know, it's not foolproof, but it's, but it's, it's, it was effective for us and I, and I know now that I still, it did teach me some things about the way I used to eat that I'm doing a better job of not doing now.
Sure.
So, but I still eat. Patty, this time of year, she's making all these cookies and, you know, we, when we have a family get together, it's like, you know, full blown still and but I eat one plate instead of two now, so.
And then you know that's just enough for you.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's one of my favorite, yeah, psychology things is like you can have a plate this big and you can fill it up and you think like that's a serving or you can have a smaller plate and fill that up, which means less calories, which will still get you full. And then you haven't just like, you know, gorge yourself beyond what you can handle and
Yep.
I think that's an excellent holiday tip. It works for me. Smaller plate, fill it up, eat once, boom, full, done, but.
Right.
Well, yeah, and probably the, one of the most valuable things that I do is I weigh myself every morning now, because that's part of what you do when you're on the Noom program. And I still do that, even though we're not actually technically doing the program anymore, but it really keeps you aware of where you're at. And if I start to creep up a little bit, then I know I've got to start backing off on the intake or, or, you know, hitting the elliptical a little more or whatever, so.
Well, and I, I was there when you started and I was there when you ended and I saw the, the weight in the, your body change. I saw your physique change and it was just really interesting to watch that happen and kind of be a part of hearing what you're learning and what works for you and what doesn't work, so. And it's just encouraging to know like there's something up there that worked.
Yeah.
Cause I feel like everywhere you turn, there's always some guru talking about how hard it is and yet to have someone achieve that goal is encouraging to me and to others.
Yeah. Yeah, when we started Patty, Patty started the keto thing. And she was watching me eat all the fruit and the vegetables that I was eating and she couldn't eat any of that and, and, and it wasn't, she wasn't getting an effect, you know, from keto and she, she finally kind of threw her hands up and says, I'm gonna do what you're doing. And I didn't say I told you so.
Yeah.
Even though, you know, we've tried keto in the past and that's so restrictive on, as to what you can eat, you know, and it's, I don't know.
Hard.
And I love cheese and meat and all those things, but after a while it gets old eating that stuff.
Right.
Yeah, so.
That's a lot of dairy going on.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And I just didn't feel that good when I was doing it. So I feel good when I'm doing the Noom type.
Yeah.
Diet, you know, it's not a diet, it's just a way that to eat, so, yeah, anyway.
You know, as you've been talking about Noom, is that what?
N-O-O-M, yes.
Makes me think, you know, there's a tool, because like that's really what it is. It's just a tool that you're applying and using in your life.
Right.
And I, you know, I thought, you know, you're talking about different options that are out there. I think that they're just all different tools.
Right.
And every person, you know, needs a different, possibly a different tool to get there.
Right.
You know.
It's whatever works for you.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Keto works really well for a lot of people.
Yeah.
But.
It does.
Intermittent fasting works really well for a lot of people.
Yes.
Like Lindsay over there can't work out while she's fasting because she doesn't feel as good.
Yeah.
Girl's got to eat before she gets in the gym.
Yeah.
Versus me, I'm fine. If I, I, I prefer to be in the gym without food in my stomach or a coffee or water, or too much water or anything, because I'm efficient that way, but. It's different.
Yeah, you just need to learn what works for you.
Yeah.
You know, and, and you'll find out as you grow older, different things are going to work for you too.
Maybe at different times in life even.
Yeah, right. Yeah, your metabolism definitely responds differently as you, as you age, you know, and and I, I don't know, all my relatives is kind of shrunk as they've gotten older, which is weird. I mean, I can remember my grandmother on my mom's side, she shrank way down when she got older. My, my grandfather, my paternal grandfather shrunk way down. I mean, I don't, is that a normal thing? I don't know.
The trend nowadays, I think, would be the opposite.
Yeah, it seems to be, so maybe I'm thankful I have the genes that I have, you know.
Yeah.
My mother's ninety-two pounds now.
Crazy.
Yeah, she's shrunk down. She was never a big lady, but she's probably twenty-five percent less than what she normally was, so. Yeah, anyway.
Well, then, yeah, some of these health tactics that have helped you recently, I feel like a lot of it, the same principles apply to business or career or whatever you're doing, because it's about, you know, finding ways to make yourself successful. So I know, like you farmed, came back to the farm in Green County, but then at some point you started doing things like real estate and you started expanding beyond just the farm enterprise.
Yeah, yeah, I did, right, twenty, twenty-five years ago. I used to do a lot of thinking when I was out on the tractor or the combine, you know, dreaming, I guess.
Yeah.
I always try to think of things, ways to do things more diversified and more efficient and more and easier, you know, and, uh, yeah, I, about twenty-some years ago, I decided I wanted to, and that's back when the farming, uh, gig wasn't as good as it's been here the last five or ten years. I mean, I might have made some of the, some poor decisions actually in retrospect, because you know, back then we were, you know, everybody was just trying to run the government programs and hopefully get a dollar eighty for corn, you know, and I mean, now our, our yields and our, and our, uh, prices are much better than that, but. So, yeah, I diversified into some real estate, uh, opportunities, I guess, and I still own a commercial real estate property. That's about all I've got left now. I've owned a lot of different stuff over the years and, and bought and sold things, but yeah, it's, it was a good. It's, it's, it's a lot of effort sometimes and, and you know, I guess my farm base gave me the, the, the opportunity to be able to, to be able to borrow money and stuff, you know, and I've never been afraid to borrow money. My dad told me early in my farming career, he says, don't be afraid to borrow money if it's something that's going to make you money. You know, he says, you don't want to go into debt for consumer stuff or, or, you know, pleasure stuff. He said, you need to buy that stuff cash, but, but he says debt for, you know, business debt is not, you know, if you can project a return on it hopefully a positive return, then, then don't be afraid of debt. And I've, I've carried substantial amounts of debt in my career. I mean, a lot of debt at times. So, but it never bothered me to do that, so.
Come through it without that debt still there, I mean, like.
Debt free now, yeah.
Cause eventually if it's making enough money, then.
Yeah.
The debt goes away.
Right, yeah.
And then you're left with the product.
Don't have any, I mean, I have a small, a, a little small mortgage debt on my lake house just because it's such a low rate that I really don't want to get rid of it because I'm, I'm investing money at much better rate than what that is, so, but yeah, I mean, virtually, you know, when you can get out of debt, that's, that's a good feeling too, so. But if you're going to be in, really about any business, you're going to incur periods at least when you're going to have.
Sure.
Debt of some kind.
I would think, especially if you're wanting to start out, I don't know how you could do that without.
Right.
Cause I mean, most people aren't starting with a huge sum.
Right.
Where I'm just gonna, you know.
Right.
Put it all into this and then see what we can do. I mean, usually you have to
Well.
Get help to begin.
You know, what's the old adage, with risk comes reward, you know, and, and you can, you know, you can, you need, but the risks need to be calculated and well thought out, you know, I mean, you, you don't just go into debt because you can, you know, because the banker will give you the money and, and you can go do whatever, you know, with it, but you gotta, and most banks require a pretty, pretty strong business plan before they're going to loan you money on, you know.
Some, some level of accountability there.
Yeah, right.
It's good.
And banks are a lot more accountable than they used to be. I know when I first started farming, I'd walk in and I'd walk in in my overalls and boots and sit down and, and sometimes they weren't real clean. I'd sit down in the president's office over at Grand Junction and say, I need three thousand dollars to go buy these feeder pigs. And he'd just fill out a little, about a half a sheet of paper and you'd sign your name at the bottom of it and that was it, you know, but, you know, he knew me too, you know, and but I mean now, gosh, you know, even for somebody that's been established as many years as I have and, and, you know, have a credit history that, that they can trust, you still, you gotta figure, fill out so much stuff anymore. It's a lot of it's regulatory, you know.
You know, that kind of makes me think one year, um, we would, when I was younger, we'd go to this youth camp every summer and I knew, I knew the people that hosted it and um, one year I was talking to the director of this summer camp and we'd always start the whole week out with this rules meeting. And I mean, it's like, you know, half an hour, all these like seemingly redundant rules and it's like, why is there a rule for that? Why is there a rule? You know, that kids at camp can't cut the hair of other kids at camp? You know, why isn't there a rule that, just stupid stuff? And I asked this director and he said, every rule has a story attached to it.
A regulation.
Yeah, and, and it makes me think, you know, with the banks and all that, like every form that's in that packet you gotta go through is because somebody abused the system one time. And they thought, they said, we're not going to let that happen again.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Yeah, well, and, you know, all banks have, have entities that they pull their debt from. So they've got not only their rules, but they got the rules from the people that, that finance them, you know, so I mean, it's, yeah, it's a lot of people that.
And.
Make careers on rules.
And probably there's, there have been times in history where you could take somebody just at their word on something and you didn't have to have every rule and loophole dealt with because there was, you know, a moral character that if I said, I'm going to do this, I'm going to do it.
And I would say that that still is, you know, I mean, in my life, I still, a lot of the businesses I do is just with a handshake, so.
Is it?
Yeah.
And is that more on like a just one-to-one level with people?
Yeah, right, yeah. Well, especially like the guy that I farm with, you know, him and I have never had any kind of written agreement. And, you know, we just trust each other and, and, yeah.
It's good.
We, you know, or, we both know that each other's word is good and, and that's, that's the way I prefer to do business. You know, I always say a contract's only as good as the two people that sign it. And if you're not, you know, if you're not, if you don't trust the person that's signing the other end, you shouldn't be doing business with them, you know, period. So contracts to me are kind of redundant, but. Anyway. That's just me. I'm pretty old fashioned.
What, what would you say you are most passionate in right now?
Oh. I, you know, probably service, you know, just general. I mean, and, and I don't always do a good job of that. I'm not, but I enjoy, I enjoy being on the school board and the, the service I do there. I'm also on a, a board of directors for a, a Bible camp up at Okoboji. The Okoboji Bible Conference, it's been going on now for eighty-eight years. And I really, I, I, I just really like serving that organization. Good people. Yeah, I, probably, probably the opportunities that I have to give back, you know, is what, what I, God blessed me with a, a generous heart, you know, and I'm, I don't say that to toot my own horn or anything. He just, I, I've always, I've always felt that, you know, and I think that's one of my gifts and I enjoy fulfilling that gift. You know, and like I said, I don't always do a perfect job of it and I probably miss opportunities that I should take to do more service. Um, I, but sometimes I feel a little too spread out too, you know, like there's stuff that goes on in our church that I miss because I'm doing something else, you know, but it's not like I'm hanging around a bar, you know.
You're not wasting your time.
I'm usually doing something else that I'm involved in, you know.
You're not binging Netflix.
No, no, I don't do that.
Doing, you're doing, you're active. You're like being busy.
Try to be, yeah.
You don't want to sit on your hands.
I try not to.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't think I even have to try. I just, that's the way I'm built.
Sure.
You know?
Yeah.
So, yeah, and I'm thankful for that because
Right on.
I think that's what, a lot of what life is, is about, you know, so.
How would you describe your school board experience so far?
Good.
Cause you, four years?
Five.
Five years now?
In February, yeah.
Right on.
Yeah. Um, it's, it's been rewarding. It has, um, you know, we've, we've made changes on the board and, and I think we've become a more responsive and, uh, accountable board, I think. Uh, when I got on, it was a pretty tumultuous time because the, the schools at Junction and Jefferson had just merged and there was a lot of hard stuff that, you know, that both districts went through with that and a lot of adjustment and, and to be able to help guide our policies in our, our district, not only through that, but then we passed the bond on the third attempt, you know, to, to build all the new stuff and there's, there were some, you know, dissension on those decisions, not on the board so much, but within the community, but ultimately it's like I tell everybody, the community is the one that voted to, to do all that, you know, it was a, I think a two-thirds vote, you know, to,
Right.
To, to do those things and so we, I, I feel like we've done, you know, my initial comment after we passed that bond was, okay, we got the community support, now we can't let them down, you know, and I, I think that's been a, a, a well-guided, successful project, I think, for the most part. I mean, there's some, some glitches and some deficiencies, but, so that's been good to be involved with and, uh, yeah, I've developed some good relationships on the board. You know, you come into that experience like everything, thinking you know everything and you don't. And so, you know, it takes a while to figure everything out. I've been meeting, we've got three new board members this year and, and I've been meeting with them and just asking them, what questions do you have? What concerns do you have? You know, and just trying to help them and, you know, it's very overwhelming at first, because especially financing part of running schools is crazy. But, uh.
I was gonna say, that's one of my big questions is how complicated is it? Because.
Real complicated.
Your team of five, school board is five people, and theoretically principals, superintendent, these figures are accountable to this community elected group of five.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's, I mean, that, it feels like that's a lot of responsibility because there's hundreds of kids and hundreds of parents that are all, you know, like a part of this thing.
Yeah, you rely on your business people and your administrative staff greatly. I mean, we, you know, we're not, we don't run the school. We run the people that run the school.
Sure.
You know, and, I mean, so it's more of an oversight thing than it is, you know, but you have to have a basic understanding of how the financing works and there's classes that we take, you know, and, and a lot of training that you get to, to help you. I, I wouldn't say I fully understand it even now, but you, you, you have a better concept of how it all works.
Those classes through the state of Iowa?
Yeah, they're through the Iowa School Board Association. We, there's a convention every November that we go down to and there's all kinds, and there's a lot of online classes that you can take too. I haven't done a lot of that, but, and just going in and, you know, I try to go in not every school board month, but a lot of times I'll go in and sit down with Brenda, our business manager and just say, you know, what exactly does all this mean, you know, because we get reports and stuff and I don't understand a lot of it. I'm not an accountant either. I hire somebody to do my accounting personally. I, I do not like accounting, so I kind of, but I try to get a good general feeling for where we're at and, you know, without getting too much into the minutia of it.
Right.
So.
Right. Well, that just goes to say that if you can build a bomb, but yet you're not willing to do accounting for a school district, that's probably how complicated it actually is.
It's just not my thing.
Sure.
I don't, I just don't like it, you know.
And a lot of that funding is fixed, right? Like it comes from the state or the Fed.
Yeah, it's determined before we ever get it, yeah, but we have to learn, we have to know, the school system, I should say, has to know how to allocate that funding the most effectively and efficiently that it can, you know, I mean, and I think we have a staff that does a pretty good job of that, so.
What's the budget look like? Can you even tell us like how much, what's, uh, what's, how much money is going in and out?
Total?
Yeah.
In an annual? I think it's like fifteen, sixteen million, something like that. And eighty-five percent of that is salary and benefits, you know, for employees, so. It's, it's a lot of money. You know, I mean, they're the, I don't know, would they be the biggest employer or the hospital? One of the two would be the biggest employer in, in a county like ours, you know.
Yeah.
It, I don't know what the hospital's annual budget is, but.
I'd say school is probably bigger.
Probably, yeah.
Just because the hospital's so small.
Right.
Yeah.
It's.
But the hospital has a lot of employees.
That's true.
They do.
I think they have three hundred employees.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Good question. Good thing to explore is where the, who is the biggest employer out there?
Yeah.
Between the two clinics that we have with McFarland and Unity Point versus the school, yeah.
Yeah, and then the county is another big employer.
County and city, for sure.
Yeah, well, the county would be bigger than any of the cities, but yeah, but yeah, I mean, municipal government in general would be or county and municipal, I guess, would be huge too, but there's a lot of people, you know, supervisors, that's a big job too.
Another team of five that's just accountable for millions of dollars that.
Yes. Yes. And the, nice thing about supervisors, they get paid. We don't get paid on the school board. And I'm not saying that's good or bad. I've often wondered why it's that way because you put a lot of time into it. And, you know, you gotta be kind of a glutton for punishment to run for a school board because you, you know, you take on a lot of responsibility with, with little material reward. There is, there's great, uh, reward, you know, on a personal level and a satisfaction level and, you know, but yeah.
In a perfect world with unlimited money, unlimited resources, what's one thing that you would do to enhance the experience of a kid as they come to school in Green County?
You know, kids are so different. They all have different needs. I would say, you know, the, the thing that I wish was not happening is it seems like we're having all of our systems and funding is being more geared to the more troubled, I don't know how to, a good term to use, you know, the, the students that, that have less opportunity, more funding goes to them and less funding goes to the, or less concentration of effort and funding goes to the higher performing, you know, kids that are gonna go on beyond. And I'm not saying, you know, the academy is, is a good opportunity for all kids. And that's, that's something that, uh, that we've put a lot of, you know, emphasis and funding into locally.
But Iowa Central Academy.
The Iowa Central Regional Academy, yeah. But that thing's been slow getting going because I think, well, I think a lot of it's because of COVID.
Sure. Poor opportune time.
We're trying to draw kids from other districts to come to that, you know, where Iowa Central is. And, and I think that's getting, that's been rough, you know? But yeah, I guess probably I'd like to see more emphasis put on getting kids to achieve higher.
Sure.
And less, I mean, but you can't really put less emphasis on the lower achieving kids because they have the greatest need.
Right.
You know, and now we're talking about lowering our, our standards for graduation. Because, and this is because of the state of Iowa. We've had a, a two-tier graduation requirement for quite a few years, you know, I think it's fifty-eight credits for the, you know, a, a regular diploma, but we've offered a basic diploma for the last several years for kids that just can't get to that regular diploma level, you know, and, and so rather than getting no diploma, they're getting a, what they call a basic diploma. Well, the state of Iowa said, came in and recently said, we can't have two standards, two systems. It has to be one standard. And we're, at this, the district, they've set up a committee of, of, uh, staff and parents that are trying to determine what recommendation they're gonna bring to the board. But, yeah, I don't, and I honestly don't know what the right answer is there, so.
You know, something that I think is interesting that I feel like is somewhat of a recent trend in like high school education is that it seems like more and more of the, you know, as you put it, like the higher achieving segment of the student population are just going on to do college credit while they're in high school.
Right.
And maybe, I, I mean, I don't, I don't have an answer for you here today, but I wonder if that would be some part of it, like a program where they just graduate with an associate's degree in addition to a high school.
Doing that now.
I believe that there are, yeah.
But that's determined by the kid.
Sure.
And working with the counselor and developing their own personal program where they can do that, you know?
Yeah.
And a lot of that has to do with, uh, that, that relationship that they get with the counselor, you know, or guidance counselors and, and, uh,
So do you think that's gonna be a bigger element of the future, like one-on-one, future planning with the kids?
You know, we, I'm encouraged because we have some good, strong, younger people in our staff now in the school system. And, uh, that's good to see. We do have a new, uh, guidance counselor that I think is gonna do a good job at the high school anyway. So, yeah, I mean, it's kinda like everything, you know, when fresh blood comes in, if it's, if it's quality fresh blood, a lot of times it, they'll up the, the performance or up the ante some, you know, so.
It's exciting.
Yeah, that's good. That's positive.
If you had enough funds in a perfect world utopia, you know, would you, do you think it's valuable that everyone's like study abroad? Or do a foreign exchange student program? Or seeing how you got out of Dodge, you went somewhere, you gained some experience, you did some stuff that wasn't in your routine. Our last guest, Bob Hamilton, he went all across United States doing this and did internships while he was going to ISU that gave him experience to kind of form his path, like.
Absolutely, yeah.
I went to Minnesota, which was basically like leaving, you know, the, the Iowa, that was like going to another country for me.
Right, right.
This townie kid had been a whole lot of places, but you went to Tulsa, Oklahoma, yeah.
Right. I lived in Florida for a summer.
You've been out about, you went somewhere, you experienced something different?
Yeah, I think all those are, you know, any, anytime you can get out and experience, something outside of your comfort zone, I think that's good. And, and I think it's even better if you can learn from it, you know, not just go have a vacation or a trip somewhere. But, you know, I mean, when you were at Tulsa, you worked a lot of different jobs and
I did.
And I'm sure, I don't know what you did in Minnesota, you probably had to stay in school most of the time because there's a lot of, a lot of school there, yeah, for what you learned. But, and for what you learned too, pasteurizing.
Thank you. Thank you for that acknowledgement.
You know, for me to just go to Iowa State and learn agriculture, I mean, that's pretty humdrum and boring. And I knew a lot of it any, I mean, I shouldn't say that. I, I, I learned a lot in college, but.
But you were already doing agriculture.
You know, I've always said that I worked a lot of different jobs when I was in college. And I've always said that the jobs that I worked in probably brought back more practical, uh, skills to my career than a lot of the school that I took did. Yeah.
I think that's why they make a lot of requirements at Iowa State now. You have to have an internship or a co-op to graduate.
And there's a lot more of that than there used to be when I was in school. Yeah, I agree.
I had to do six months of an internship before I could graduate, so.
Yeah, no. And, you know, that's kinda what the, the Career Academy here is, you know, it's giving kids and other things in the high school are giving kids opportunities to do, you know, kind of internships or experiences with different businesses and industries. And, and I, I think those are all good things. Yeah. You know, now is that, there are people that will argue, you know, that, you know, our kids are not as finely educated as they used to be, you know, like in the arts or the, you know, sociology and psychiatry, you know, all those, you know, different disciplines that are not, you know, related sometimes to their career path, but I don't know, I took psychiatry when I was in school and I was bored to death with it. But it was something I had to fill a slot with, you know?
Right, right.
I, I didn't remember absolutely nothing from it, so.
And how would you have known that unless you tried it?
Eh, maybe that's, yeah, true. I don't know. Wasted some money there, but in time. But, you know, that's, like I say, I just, I only got a, I actually was in school about almost three years. I got a two-year associate's farm op degree. But I think the things that I did outside of school were a much better, more valuable education to me than a lot of my school was to go back and farm with. So I learned how to build houses over there. We built Johnny Orr's house when I was over there.
Johnny Orr, football player Johnny Orr?
No, he was the basketball coach. Came from University of Michigan.
Okay.
He's the one that really launched Cyclone basketball. Yeah, you guys don't remember Johnny Orr?
I'm a millennial, remember?
I came in in the time of the mayor.
Yeah, yeah. Well, he was.
He was my first basketball coach at Iowa State.
Johnny Orr was the mayor's coach.
There you go. Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah. Oh, he was awesome. Johnny Orr was, he was a big promoter of the university and a good coach.
Yeah.
Not a very good defensive coach.
Did you get to meet him while you were building this house?
Never did. Uh-uh. No, no. I, I was one of the peons on the crew, you know, but I'd learned a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Valuable.
Yeah.
I just, one of the things I've thought, you know, as you've talked about all the things you've done and all the projects you've started and, I mean, very different. I mean, so many things that are so different from nuclear weapons to livestock and crop growing. I didn't probably say that the right way, but.
Production.
Crop production. Yeah, there we go. To, you know, building houses, to the schooling and philosophy classes and
Right.
Um, you know, public service on the school board. I, I think about just starting all those things that are in such different veins. Have you ever felt like you've gotten into something and been like in over your head when you begin? And, and how have you managed that? Such a diverse group of, you know, workings that you've done. How, how do you get into all of those things? I mean, is there a quality you feel like you've developed or you've had that's enabled you to just get into such different things and do well in them?
Well, I, maybe I haven't always done well. I don't know. You know, I mean, I think, I, I think a lot of, you know, the things that you accomplish in your life, I've always said, the hardest thing is to start, you know? And just jump into it and be willing to learn. And, and I, I've always had a, tried to have a real understanding that not so much that I think I know stuff, but that I understand that I don't know stuff. And rely on people and, and other, uh, you know, sources of information to get the information that you need to make decisions.
Yeah.
Even in my farming operation, I mean, I didn't know, back when I was farrowing pigs for a lot of years, I didn't know genetics, but I worked with a company that was really strong on genetics. I, I was not an expert on nutrition, but I worked with a really strong nutritionist. I was not a veterinarian, but I worked with good veterinarians. You know, you gotta know who to rely on to get the information. And I, I've always said it's more important to know what you don't know than what you do know.
That's good too.
And because if you, I mean, I, I think in any operation, leaders especially need to really know what they don't know and rely on good people to, you know, to, to help find solutions and, and, uh, and, uh, you know, help them to make those decisions. Don't be afraid of good people underneath of you. So some, some leaders are intimidated by strong people underneath of them. And I think that's a weak leader, you know?
Right.
Yeah. I think strong leaders understand their own fallibilities.
Sure.
Yeah.
Strong leader brings up other strong leaders and knows how to promote a person who's, has that capableness of them.
Right, yeah.
I see in that humility.
Yeah, I think that's a big part of it.
Humility in relationships.
I think in life, humility is huge. The Bible teaches a lot about it.
It absolutely does.
Yeah.
Relying on the strength of someone else.
Yeah, right. Yeah. Yeah. And I, that bears out not only, you know, in your spiritual path, but in your, in your career path or anything, you know, or your, your relational paths, you know, with other people.
And your, and your family.
Right, yeah. And I've not always done a good job with that, you know, I mean, so, but I have a good understanding of it, but.
I, I feel like your experience is just such a picture of humility in operation then because, I mean, you, there's no reason you should have been, you know, an expert on a school board or a farm board or the Okoboji Bible Conference Board or in the nuclear.
I, I'm not an expert on anything.
You're humble and you're willing.
Yeah, yeah. You gotta be willing to learn and listen and, and that relational component too, I think is huge. You know, you gotta be, you know, that's what helps you develop the, the, you know, this, the contacts and systems that you need to make good decisions or be able to do what you do, so.
Well, I suppose if you're humble without any relationships, then you're just aware, self-aware of your own lack. I mean, if you don't have the relationships to draw upon the strength of another,
Right.
Then all the humility in the world just shows you that you're less than enough.
Yeah, right. So, yeah, I think we have a lot of, a lot of leaders in charge of a lot of things in this country now that are not humble. And they just, they think they know it all, you know? Yeah.
Power hungry doesn't care about the underlines, the people that they're taking power and resources from, you know, so it's.
Yeah, it's their motives are, are misdirected, yeah.
Sure.
But that's the difference. You said yourself, you know, I'm, I'm a public servant. And, and it's a different approach because when you're doing that, you're wanting to, and, and even in that article we started with, from when you got on the board, one of the things you said in there was, um, I'm interested in representing the interests of the former East Green District in the new school. And so even your start on the school board seems to be themed in wanting to represent and serve people.
I think that's something that is lost on a lot of governing entities of any kind, you know, is who are you serving? Who, who are you accountable to?
Sure.
I think it's really prevalent in politics anymore, you know? Yeah, it's, and it's like, I've talked to a couple of the new members and I said, always remember who you represent. You don't represent the school, you represent the public to the school, you know, and because the public owns the school, you know, the administrators don't own the school, the school board doesn't own the school, it's, it's the community school, you know? And we are only the representatives of the community that's governing what the school does. Now, we don't, you know, micromanage things. We put people in place that we feel have, you know, the competency and the abilities to lead the school, but then we oversee that. But, yeah, I had a parent call me recently on a situation with their child in a particular classroom. And I said, I'm sorry, but that's not my role. You need to talk to the teacher first. And if you don't get satisfaction there, then you go to the principal, then you go to the superintendent. And then if you don't get satisfaction in all those areas, we are the ultimate accountability, you know, to, to, but we're making those people accountable to us as representatives of the community, you know, we're not, we're not supposed to get involved in, you know, all the little
Classroom disputes.
minutia, yeah, that goes on in the school.
And it's like you have to give all those other people a chance to do their job before you would step in and drop the hammer.
And on the other hand, yeah, I, I try to encourage administrators in anything that, you know, rely on the people underneath of you. Let them do their job, but hold them accountable for doing their job, you know? I mean, and a lot of this is stuff I learned in the military, you know? I mean, it, those were just really valuable lessons for me as a young, impressionable dumb kid, you know, so. But, uh, yeah, I mean, these systems will work if you, if you work them.
Yeah.
You know, but, uh.
But you gotta let them work.
You gotta let them work and you gotta have people cooperating in those systems that are gonna let, allow them to work. Yeah, so.
And maybe not be afraid of conflict because conflict or it's just kind of a natural thing that's bound to happen at some point.
Conflict doesn't have to be, uh, it doesn't have to be unpleasant.
Yeah.
You know, you can have conflict and still be, uh, you know, nice about it, you know? I mean, constructive conflict, I guess, is what I'm trying to say, you know? Conflict is good. That means there's people that are trying to figure things out, you know?
Trying to make things better.
Right. And I've had very little, you know, people say, oh, you run for school board, you're glutton for punishment. Well, in some ways we are, but I've had very few, uh, I don't know if I've had any interactions with people in the public that have been what I would call, you know, toxic or, or, you know, even confrontational in a, in a negative way. I mean, I've had people call and they're upset about something. I'd say, let's talk about it. You know, what do you think should happen? You know, do you have a solution for this? And, and if they want me to talk to somebody, I will. And I, and the thing I've told all the new board members is I always get back to people afterwards. I make sure and respond, maybe I can't give them an answer, you know, but people just wanna be heard a lot of times. You know, they don't, they don't necessarily need to have a solution or, you know, wisdom from you. They just wanna be heard, you know? And I think you just need to hear them more than anything, so, yeah.
I was watching something the other day and, uh, it was like a, a married couple or a soon-to-be married couple. And the husband was one who always wants to fix the problems of the wife. And then
That's me.
This person was advised to just, you know what, every now and again, just say, man, that sounds like it stinks.
Yeah.
Just to identify with the complaint and just be there for them and not necessarily like have to work to fix it now. I, in a school, that's probably better relationship advice than a school board advice. There's probably things that you need to work on or at least get them to the right person to where things can be handled. But yet, like, the first step is listening to the person and making sure they feel heard, so.
Right, right. Yeah, yeah. Even, even when you, you know, when you have to tell them that you're not the one to fix it, you don't say it like, well, that's not my problem, you know, or, or, you know, you need to go take, yeah, I mean, you try to guide them rather than tell them, you know, so, yeah.
So that's a big part of your job as a school board member then is just that guidance, just that guiding hand to kind of push things and. So that's a big part of your job as a school board member then, is just that guidance, just that guiding hand to kind of push things in the right productive direction.
In a constructive way, yeah, yeah, I think, and I I think we've got a board now that's pretty, doing a pretty good job of that. You know, I mean, within the constraints and confines of what we can actually do in education, which is, it's a lot less of a. Impact than than what we might think when you get on the board, I mean, we guide a lot of the local stuff, but a lot of the. A lot of things are mandated from state, federal and. A lot of them aren't good.
Yeah, I mean, when you, what percentage of things that operate in a school district are mandated versus what is malleable? That you can actually influence?
I'd say less than a third is what you actually can impact.
Sure.
From local decisions.
Sure, that's fascinating.
Yeah, it's a little disheartening sometimes.
Because you'd like to have a bigger influence or?
I think, I think any government that's directed locally is better than, you know, from on high. I mean, just generally, you know, I I really believe in bottom up government, you know, not top down. And uh, yeah, but it just seems like everything's migrating to more, you know. Authority from the top, trying to tell everybody else what to do, whether it's all these mandates or, you know. Educational policy or, you know, uh. OSHA stuff, I mean, you know, there's just so much that's coming from the top down and.
And you're the guy, your team is the guy, the people that have the boots on the ground, you know, these people who are not here are trying to influence.
Right, yeah.
Policy, but yet they don't know the tone of our community necessarily, so I I see how that that would provide some conflict in some ways.
It's frustrating.
It's like the example of, you know, someone calls and says, hey, did you hear this happened in the classroom? And then it's like, well, you need to talk to the teacher first because they're the one that's there.
Right.
Instead of you saying, well, I heard that this happened and this is what I'm gonna do about it.
Yeah, and.
It's entrusting those that are below you to do their job.
And I think nationwide you're seeing, I mean, obviously, kind of revolt against some of these school boards, you know, we, we aren't having probably the. Same types of issues out here in small rural Iowa, but, you know, I I have a good friend that's been very involved in Johnston, Iowa. With things that have been going on with their school board and, you know, they're, and I, you know, I've watched a couple of their school boards, that's kind of interesting. But uh, you know, there's a, there's a large segment of the parents down there that feel like their interests are not being represented well. And so they've, they've risen up and they've, they've uh got, you know, active and and they're making some changes. And I I've talked to him, my friend, a lot of times about it, I says, I applaud you guys for what you're doing, you're getting involved, you know, you're you're affecting change. And, you know, I like it when people come to our school board meetings, you know, I always tell people, you know. Please come and and see how things work and and, you know, there is the opportunity for you to speak. And if you need to, you can get on the agenda and then you can, then we can act upon, you know, there's certain rules that that we have to have on school board. Or or any public board, you know, but uh, yeah, so more people involved, the better as far as I'm concerned, so.
Because that's what, that's what you did, you went to a bunch of school board meetings before you were even elected, right?
Yeah, I've always gone to school board meetings, not always, but, you know, back in East Green, I used to go to some meetings. I always said it was cheap entertainment.
The local show.
Yeah, it's, it's just funny to watch different personalities when they get in positions of leadership and authority and how they react to it. And and I I learned a lot going to a lot of meetings and how I didn't think you're supposed to act as a as a board member. And how I don't want to act as a board member, so, but uh, we've, we've got a good board now.
Good.
I think we're. Positioned well for the next few years, but, you know, I mean, it's, it's gonna, people need to continue to rise up and. Be willing to get involved and serve on any board, you know?
I think that's a major component of any thriving community.
Yes.
Any community group is.
Yes.
Willingness of people to serve.
Yeah, and and, you know, be involved, yeah, yeah, and the more the merrier, as far as I'm concerned, yeah.
Anything else on the school board topic that you would wanna?
Not really.
We've covered it, we've wrapped it.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think, I'm, it's been a overall a positive experience, I think. And and I think we've made some positive uh effect there, so.
Cool.
We, I mean, we we've had some good members on there since I've been on, so, and I think the three that just got elected are all gonna be good. So, I really do, so. Yeah.
Positive direction.
Positive direction.
Yeah, I think so.
It's all you can ask for.
That's right.
Yeah. You um. This is a question we always ask, I suppose, people towards the end of our session is like a very influential book or movie or. Thing of media that, it's not all media is good media, not all like uh uh entertainment media is good, but what has been like, what's your favorite?
Oh, gosh.
Favorite movie, maybe I'll just say that, favorite movie, tell me. Tell us.
You know, I'm not a big movie guy, no, I mean, I I gravitate to movies like uh. Oh, I mean, I I bet I haven't even been to a movie for a couple of years. I and I'll bet I average going to one a year, maybe, I'm not a movie guy, I'm. And I'm not the best reader, I get bored reading, I I like, I listen to a lot of podcasts. I listen to a lot of good conservative, I'm not saying that I'm politically. I I I call myself independent, I'm very independent, I I see a lot of flaws in both sides. Of of the political spectrum and uh, you know, I I just think. My biggest influence is my Christian faith.
Sure.
I mean, I I got saved at a later age, you know, I was forty-one years old and uh, that's, that's probably. I I can look at the the good things that have happened in my life since then. And it's, it's, I mean, even my finances, you know, I I've done so much better in every aspect of my life since then. And I'm not the most devout, you know. Theologian in the world either, but I I get the concepts really well and I try to plug those into my life and. And uh, but yeah, as far as a personal book or movie, I don't know, I like Dances with Wolves.
There you go.
I like, I I would gravitate more towards uh uh historical things like. Oh, probably my favorite media of all time would be Band of Brothers, have you ever seen that? I watch it every winter.
Yeah.
I watch it clear through, I I own it on a CD set and every winter, and I'll start that probably in January, I I watch it through every year. And I sit and just ball through the whole thing, I mean, I I just in, because of the sacrifice and the. And the devotion and the camaraderie and the relationships that those guys built, you know, and. That, yeah, that would probably be something that influences me as much as anything. And I think that's why I like Dances with Wolves, I mean, I love that movie because that guy, you know, I mean, he tried to commit suicide. He was, he was fed up with the war and his life and he got sent out west and developed relationships with the Indians and an understanding, you know, of. Of a culture that he had no understanding of and I I think inspirational things like that are what what really. I'm trying to think of any other uh experience, you know, Saving Private Ryan. I mean, I've actually been to Normandy Beach and that was, I spent two days there on a little tour bus called. Battle Bus. It was a nine passenger bus that we toured around for two days on, that was one of the most impactful periods of my life.
Like something we need to do.
Oh, it was unbelievable, it was so good, yeah, I'd like to do more of that, I I really would, I. That's probably maybe a regret that I have is that I haven't seeked out, sought out more. Things like that to do in my life and and now it's getting harder to do those things, you know, so.
You are trying to kind of retire now, though, right? So theoretically, if you stop serving on all these boards.
Patty says that too.
Free time back.
Yeah, and I, you know, I will, I, you know, I I've got two more years to serve on school board and then I'll I'll hang it up then. I'm still, I'm president of a mutual insurance company too and that keeps me pretty busy and I need to. Figure out a way to do less of that, so.
That's okay to say publicly, you just announced your succession plan there. It's out now.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
Eventually, right?
Eventually.
Yeah, I'm not gonna put a timeline on it.
Things could change.
But I enjoy all these things still, you know, and.
Yeah.
I I don't know, I, you gotta have purpose in your life, you know, and. You know, probably planting seeds is, it's a good purpose, but it's.
Both literal and metaphorical seeds.
There you go, yeah.
So if you didn't serve on these things, you would find a way to plant a seed and serve in another way.
Probably, yeah, and you know, I think that's something, again, that God's instilled in me and. I, you know, it's a privilege and an honor to be able to fulfill some of that, you know?
Awesome.
So, yeah.
It's awesome, cool, man. Lot of value here.
Well, I I feel blessed, you know, to be able to experience, I mean, I. Haven't had a real flashy life, but it's been a fulfilling one and and one with. I hope humility and uh and self-examination. And correction at times.
Yeah.
I made a lot of mistakes when I was young and uh, I I, you guys should feel blessed that you have the foundations. That you have in your lives that hopefully you'll eliminate or avoid a lot of the mistakes that a lot of us make throughout life, so. Feel fortunate and blessed in that regard, I mean, that's a huge, it's huge, so.
Yeah, I certainly do.
Yeah.
Very blessed.
Yeah.
For sure, right, I'm at a good place now, I've certainly made my fair share of mistakes, but if we can bring people like you on and others similar.
From other mistakes.
And just propel other people forward into production, you know, I think that's our whole, part of our whole mission here, yeah.
It's a good mission.
Thank you for helping us bring value to that mission right there, so.
Privilege, I really, I'm honored to be able to sit down with you guys and if you ever want to do it again, let me know. I've enjoyed every one of your podcasts, you know, and there uh, there's just little tidbits that you get from all of them and and uh, it's just. You know, there was a lot of things, I've known Bob Hamilton for years and I didn't know a lot of the little details about his life, it was interesting to hear, you know? I knew he'd worked a lot of jobs, but I didn't know where they were and.
Right.
Yeah.
It's awesome.
I think someone will certainly get a tidbit out of this today, this has been a really good podcast.
I hope so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Been great getting to know you a little bit more.
There's a, there's way more beyond yourself, you know?
Yeah.
And I think that's a realization that maybe some people have a hard time coming to, you know? Due to their detriment.
True.
You know, so, but yeah, it's good, no, appreciate it, so.
Closing thoughts, closing statement?
Well, the last thing I just thought was, you know, he talked earlier about listening to leaders and watching leaders in your life in the military. And learning lessons from examining the actions and lives of others and I thought, you know, that's kind of what we're doing right here. Is we're looking at the lives of others, people, what's worked for them, what hasn't, and we're trying to draw that little value. So for you to come on and be one of those for us to look at as leader and examine, you know, what's worked, what hasn't. And just hear straight from your mouth.
Yeah.
It's been good, valuable.
Glory to God.
Pen drop.
Amen, yeah.
This has been Unfiltered, he's Isaac.
He's Philip.
We've had Steve Fisher and Lindsay Woffen.
That's right.
Till next time, catch you later.
Goodbye.